Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The December 11th, 2025 meeting of the Medford Planning Commission will now come to order. Kaylee, can we have a roll call, please?
Rachel Bennett.
Here.
Larry Besko.
Here.
David Colbertson.
Here.
Mark McKechnie.
Here.
EJ McManus.
Here.
Jared Pulver.
Here.
Jeff Thomas.
Here.
Jim Wallen. Role has been taken.
Thank you. And we have seven present tonight, and then we have a quorum. Tonight's agenda is available on the city's website for those watching from home. The order of business this evening will consist of consent calendar and written communications, minutes, public hearings, and reports. Item 20 is a consent calendar and written communications. We do not have any items on this agenda item tonight. Item 30 is the minutes. Have commissioners reviewed the minutes from the planning commission meeting of November 13th, 2025? And if so, are there any additions or corrections to be noted? All right, seeing none, the minutes will stand as presented. Item 40 is oral requests and communications from the audience. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to address the commission on matters that are not on tonight's agenda. If you wish to speak, please come forward to the podium, sign in, and tell us your name and your concern. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody come forward. We will move on to public hearings. Item 50.1 through 50.3 and 50.5 will be conducted as quasi judicial hearings. Item 50.4 will be conducted as a legislative hearing. If you plan to testify, please listen carefully to the following prepared statement regarding the procedural rules that govern these hearings. The statement will be read by Mr. Alan Moreland, Deputy City Attorney.
I'm going to explain the rules that govern these hearings. Before the hearing begins, city staff will give a report. The report will list the criteria that govern the city's decision. After the staff report, the hearing will be opened for other speakers. The applicant will speak first and may ask for rebuttal time. Following the applicant, any other interested person will be allowed to speak. Any testimony, argument, or evidence you give must relate to the criteria listed in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations that you believe apply to the decision. If you fail to raise an issue, do not give the commission sufficient information so that the commission and any party can respond. You will not be able to appeal that issue to the Land Use Board of Appeals. If you do not raise constitutional or other issues about any proposed condition with specificity so that the commission can respond to that issue, you will not be able to bring a court action for damages. Before the hearing is closed, anyone who needs more time to present evidence must ask for more time. If you ask, the hearing will be continued or the record will be kept open, and you will have at least seven days to present additional written evidence.
Thank you. In order to proceed through this evening's agenda in a timely manner, except at the commission's request, applicants giving testimony will be given 10 minutes to present their application. Individuals who have comments about these applications will be given three minutes to respond, or five minutes if they are representing a group or organization. And five minutes will be given to the applicant for rebuttal. Item 50.1, TF-25-263, consideration of approval of a transportation facility application to upgrade Stevens Street from Crater Lake Avenue to approximately 250 feet north on Wabash Avenue, as well as potential improvements to Oregon Terrace and Pearl Street. The project seeks to install street elements such as sidewalks, curb, gutter, parking, bike lanes, storm drain facilities, and street lighting where appropriate and as permitted within the constrained right-of-way. The project seeks to modify the minor collector street cross-section standards as well. The applicant agent is the city of Medford. The planner is Kayla Parr. Staff has requested that this item be continued to the January 8th, 2026 Planning Commission meeting. If there is anyone in the audience that has come to tonight to testify in this agenda item, and they cannot make the January 8th meeting, please come forward now, and the commission will hear your testimony. Please keep in mind, however, that your questions may be answered at the January 8th, 2026 meeting. There will be no decisions made this evening on this agenda item. Okay? With that, is there anyone that wishes to come forward to speak on this agenda item? Okay, seeing no one. Just as a reminder, this item was continued for the November 13th, 2025 meeting, and the public hearing is still open. Since we have nobody coming forward, can we have a motion to continue this?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move to continue TF-25-263 to the January 8th, 2026 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes?
Just as part of the continuance request, staff wants to bring the updated designs to a study session on the 22nd. And I just want to check in because I think each of the commissioners had questions and comments, and I want to make sure that folks are going to be available for that study session because I know that's the week of the holidays. So before giving it full-throated approval, I want to make sure we're all on board for that.
All right. So you're looking for a little straw poll and, okay, you're gonna just run down, you're gonna up, making it, making it. I won't be there. Sorry.
What was that date?
The 22nd. It would be Monday.
Yep, I'm here.
Sorry.
Huh? You're okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I'm running the meeting.
Okay, so Larry? Yep, okay, so there's your straw poll. You're welcome. Okay, Kaylee, can we have a roll call, please?
EJ McManus.
Yes.
Larry Besko.
Yes.
David Colbertson.
Yes.
Rachel Bennett.
Yes.
Jared Pulver.
Yes.
Jeff Thomas.
Yes.
Mark McKechnie.
Yes.
We have seven yeses.
Thank you. Motion passes. Agenda item 50.2, LDS-25-290, proposal for the development of a five-lot residential subdivision. The site consists of a single parcel totaling approximately 1.19 acres, located east of Lozier Lane and fronted by Cherry Street along its easterly boundary and within the SFR 6 zoning district. The applicant is IBH Investments, Inc., the agent is Metro Planning, Inc., and the planner is Dustin Severs. All right. Does any commissioner have a conflict of interest or ex parte contact to disclose regarding this application? Okay, seeing none, does anyone in the audience wish to question the commission as to conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts? Okay, seeing none. Dustin, can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Dustin Severs of the Planning Department. First up, we do have a land division for you. The applicant hasn't come up with a subdivision name yet, so we're simply calling this the IBH subdivision. IBH Investments is the applicant. Their agent is Metro Planning, and they do have some representatives from Metro Planning on the Zoom call. Looking at our legal requirements, the criteria for a land division are found in Section 10.2025 of our Land Development Code, and also included on the screen and is also provided in your staff reports. Looking at our project summary, so the subject site consists of a single parcel totaling approximately 1.19 acres. A little history on the property, so it was annexed in the city in 1998. Just last year, this body approved a zone change, taking the parcel from SFR 00 to its current SFR 6 zoning. There was a house built on there since 1930. It was recently demolished just this year, and they have replaced it with a new home. It appears that the house is fully constructed to this point, so that property is developed at this point. As you can see, there is, this is a flag lot, and the flag pole does extend out to Cherry Street. Cherry Street is classified as a standard residential street. It's under the jurisdiction of Jackson County. And also stop at the normaly boundary is Vic Lane, which is classified as a minor residential street. Looking at the surrounding area, so to the north and south are single-family residential subdivisions. Immediately to the west is Jackson County land. This property is in Jackson County, outside the city limits. It is within our urban growth boundary and does have a UH, I believe, club designation. So when it is developed, we'll be looking at multifamily. To the southwest, we have some industrial. And also immediately to the east is the Cherry Street Meats. It's been there for some time. If you recall, Cherry Street Meats, that did go through a PUD before, just a few years ago, and included a six-lot subdivision on that vacant west side of the property, just adjoining our subject property. And as you can see, that they'll be, once that is built out, they'll be extending Combs Street, which will again turn onto the west and also make a connection. Here's an image of the site looking west from Cherry Street. So the flagpole portion of this property is the grassy area, while the flagpole of the abutting property, tax lot 400, is the gravel area, which provides access to that house on tax lot 400. And there's a shared access agreement between the subject property and that property. Site general use planned designation is urban residential. Yes, you can see to the west, that county property is club UH for multifamily. Zoning is SFR 6, which matches the subdivision just to the north of the site. There are no overlays associated with the site. And the proposal is for a five-lot residential subdivision. Taking a closer look at the submitted tentative plat, first look at density, so they're posting five lots for the, so based on the size of the lot and its zoning, it falls with that minimum maximum, actually hits that minimum, which is five lots. They will be extending Vic Lane with this development, be taking it from this north boundary down to its south boundary. And as shown on their tentative plat, as requested by Public Works, they also show a tentative layout of how the street circulation will work once the property to the south, which is tax lot 400 develops. You see that we'll be extending Vic Lane down to where Vic Lane is currently terminates to the south side of tax lot 400, ultimately connect to Aster Street, making that full connection. Commissioner can find all five lots, meet all the dimensional requirements for the SFR 6 zone, that's in for lot area width, depth, and frontage. So Lot 1, which is where the house is, this is the new house is currently constructed beside it on Lot 1. It is a flag lot. So flag lots do require a minimum 20-foot width, or the flagpole requires 20-foot width or 20-foot frontage. It is a little short on this, however, this isn't existing. They're not creating the flag lot. It's existing, so it wouldn't be applicable. And also point out that there is a shared agreement with the abutting flagpole, shared access agreement. So once they develop their property, they will be required to pave any driving maneuvering areas. I'm not sure if there's an intent to pave the gravel portion as well. I may have to defer that to the applicant. But it will have a 30-foot wide access when you combine the two flagpoles. So access is interesting on this one. So lots two and, two and four, or two and three on the, it's hard to see, on the west side, do have direct frontage off of Vic Street, which will be extended or Vic Lane. And they will have driveways that are proposed off the street. Then lots two and five also have direct frontage off of Vic Lane, however, they're not proposing driveways off of Vic Lane. Rather, they're proposing to take access off that long flagpole along with Lot 1. The reason why is, you can see, there is a little creek does run south to north through the middle of the property. And the Public Works has shown on their tentative plat, they do require a 20-foot easement, 10 feet on each side of the creek. Also requires some landscape plantings be put in. So avoid impacting the creek, and no doubt it'd be expensive to do any kind of work there. They're not proposing any driveways. Again, they'll be taking access from that long flagpole. They will, however, be providing a, was it, five-foot private pedestrian access as for emergency personnel, fire, et cetera. I'll send you over. It's our findings and recommendations. Staff has reviewed the applicant's findings and conclusions and recommends the commission adopt the findings that is submitted. And we ask you to adopt the findings provided by the applicant and adopt the final order for approval of the LDS-25-290. That's per the staff report dated December 4th, 2025, and includes exhibits A through L. Again, we do have the applicant's agents on the Zoom call, and we also have Mr. Doug Burrows here. If you have any questions regarding streets or any type of engineering, thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. Commissioners have any questions for staff? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dustin. I just had a question. Is if the property owners for two and five wanted to take access off Vic, they'd be allowed to, correct?
They could, yes.
Okay. And then did I hear you say that the access, that long panhandle access is going to end up as 30-foot wide paved section, or are you just saying that that's what the right-of-way is?
No, they have 15 feet on their property. There's an additional 15 feet, but that's the flagpole on the abutting property to the south. So apparently, there's a shared access and agreement in place there. So effectively, you're going to have...
Do you know what will, what the paved width will be?
Well, they will be required to pave their 15.
Excuse me?
Mike?
Mike?
They're be required to pave their 15 feet as to whether or not, and once the property to the south develops, that they're be required to pave theirs as well, as if it's their intention to pave all 30 feet with this development. I don't have the answer to that, so I'll defer to the applicant on that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? No?
No, I do.
Okay.
Kind of a series of questions. There's, in the ma-
Kind of a series of questions. There's, in the maps that were submitted in our file, it looked like where the eastern side of the terminus where Vic Lane is going to come together, it may have been just a typo in the CAD drawings, but it looked like there was an offset of about two feet. They didn't actually match up on the plat. This looks like it's there, but when you get the larger version, there was a little bit of an offset on their drawings, and I was curious if we were going to create something like we did. I think it was Nicholas Lee, we had the two street widths didn't match.
Yeah, perhaps it was maybe the civil plans, we're looking at tentative plat here, you think perhaps it was this?
It could be. They were in our packet, and it just kind of raised my hand.
I'm not sure, man. Doug, you have an answer for that? Do you recall seeing that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Probably just a, yeah, probably just a typo on the design. So the second part deals with Little Elk Creek. There's two notes in the applicant, in the staff report that identify that they want 10 feet either side of center line, but it's a discretionary option. They've already provided 10 feet both sides, so it's kind of one of those, why is it discretionary if they're already going to grant it? It was, and then in the staff, or the Public Works report, that one wasn't mentioned. Then the other one is the landscaping, requesting trees to be planted on the embankment to improve shading and stuff like that. And that also wasn't mentioned as a discretionary in the actual summary notes, and I wasn't sure if that was, should be there, or with its discretionary, and there was nothing on the plans for that, so.
Yeah, I think the difference is, is that the Land Development Code doesn't necessarily require landscape plantings. However, I believe DEQ do, does require, that's why they specifically identified as discretionary. I don't believe the applicant has had any issues, not challenging either the easement or the landscaping, so I'm not sure if we need to add that. In our motion, we certainly could.
It's, they're discretionary, so, and the only question I'd have is who gets the discretionary?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
Any other comments? I do have one, just to kind of follow up in what Larry said, and it, thank you, Doug, for coming down, because it's a question for you.
Good evening, Chair, fellow commissioners. Doug Burrows with the Public Works Department. Great questions, Mr. Culbertson. They're discretionary because it's not outright specific in the code. And so we want to list them as discretionary, and you're right, I look, our summary page, which is, we have some fine print that says this is for reference, but you're right, there is, we do try to distinguish the two. Excuse me, however, on the storm, we kind of point people back to the body of the report, and we don't get too specific in there, although we certainly could. So that's why they're discretionary. And I think our report explains why they're required. It's either because of DEQ, we're required to manage these other things, and so that's why we have that authority to do that. It's discretion, whether you want to include it or not, you can't. If you don't, for some reason, then when you adopt the final order and adopt our report, you should specifically say you don't want to require those. And this is very common to ask for both of those things. Did that answer your question? The deviation, I think I might have saw what you were talking about. There's a little error in their math on the cross-section and how it's illustrated. That might be why it looks kind of shifted at the north. All that will get worked out in the design of the street. You know, as long as their right of way is 55 feet on the tentative, then that will be, it'll work out, okay?
Okay, perfect.
Good catch. Anything else?
Yes, I.
Mr. McHekney, yes.
So, two questions, I think. One is, if the lots two and five wanted to connect to Vic Lane, what kind of a bridge would they be required to put on over Elk Creek?
It would be, it would be a private bridge.
Okay, so just a culvert or something?
You know, it would really be, since it would be private, I was kind of joking, but it would be private.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't manage that, we wouldn't dictate that. And Mr. Besko asked if they could, they certainly could. Vic Lane is a lower order street, they could take direct access off of it.
Yeah.
As far as the bridge itself, they'd be working with the state, Department of State Lands.
So those would be the entities that would have to approve?
They probably would, yeah. I don't know if we would even review that necessarily. It'd be a private permit for that, for that work, because it's all on private property.
Okay. Oh, that was, that was my question.
Okay, good question.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, with that, we will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to speak regarding the project. And do we have somebody on Zoom?
Jed Truitt, Metro Planning, representing the applicant. Can you hear me? All right?
Sure can.
Okay, good. Yeah, I don't have much to add. Dustin's done a good job here. I can answer questions. I mean, the first easiest question is, putting a bridge over the creek there is just cost prohibitive, and it's also time prohibitive. I mean, working through, deal with the state as well as potentially the Corps of Engineers to get that permitted would take forever. And the cost would be just so prohibitive that it just wouldn't make the project feasible, really. So we've included the crossing there for fire. We talked to the fire marshal about that. Whatever the minimum required for paving along the panhandle, that's what we'll do. And I don't think we have any issues with the discretionary items that you guys were talking about. So other than that, if you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer. I'm not the engineer, Todd Powell's the engineer, but I can also get information back to you if we need to.
Thank you. Any que, yes, sir. We have a question for you.
Yes, I'd like to ask, on lots two and five, would, if they are taking, assuming they're taking an access off the panhandle, would they, would those homes be oriented with the back, the back of the home toward Vic, or would they be oriented with the front of the homes being maybe on the north side? And I'm, what were you thinking on that, if I could ask?
That's a good question. I mean, in my personal opinion, they should be facing Vic, but I'm not the owner or builder. So, I mean, at this point, I'm in, I don't know that we had a clear orientation. It could be a garage in building facing the driveway, or it could be a rear-loaded garage in the building facing Vic. I think either would work fine. I think it'd be nicer if it was facing Vic. That's my personal opinion.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could ask one more question, please. In the panhandle, were you going to just pave it 15 feet wide along the, the full width of the, your property there?
Right. I mean, I think that's going to, it'll boil down to whatever the city requires for us to do there.
That's kind of a long panhandle. I was wondering if you're going to do any bump outs for one, if you've got three lots taking access off of that, there's going to be?
The total easement width is 30 feet, so there should be plenty of width there.
Okay, so they can just go off on the other driveway if there's approaching vehicle, then, huh?
Right.
Okay.
Or the driveway gets combined. I don't know how that will all work.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Truitt.
Thank you.
I assume you'll want to reserve time for rebuttal if needed?
Yep, I'll be here.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, not seeing anybody come forward. So Planning, have any additional comments?
None, thank you.
Engineering, any additional comments?
No, thank you.
Legal, have any comments?
No.
Okay, then we, I'm assuming, Mr. Truitt, you don't need rebuttal time?
I do not. Thank you.
All right, then we will close the public hearing. And do we have a motion for consideration?
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the findings as provided by the applicant and adopt the final order for approval of LDS-25-290, per the staff report dated December 4th, 2025, including Exhibits A through L.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none or hearing none. Kaylee, can we have a roll call, please?
David Culbertson?
Yes.
Rachel Bennett?
Yes.
Jeff Thomas?
Yes.
Jared Pulver?
Yes.
Larry Besko?
Yes.
EJ McManus?
Yes.
Mark McHekney?
Yes.
We have seven yeses.
Thank you. Motion passes. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item 50.3 CUP 25-325, request for a conditional use permit to widen the existing Highland Drive Bridge over Larson Creek within the riparian corridor. The right of way is adjacent to the P1 and CSP zoning district. The applicant agent is Janelle Stradner with ODOT, the planner is Stefan Ronfeld. Does any commissioner have a conflict of interest or ex parte contact to disclose regarding this application? Okay, seeing none, does anyone in attendance wish to question the commission as to conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts? Okay, seeing nothing there. Stefan, can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. Stefan Ronfeld with the Planning Department. Next up is the Larson Creek Bridge Widening. This is a conditional use permit, and we have ODOT with us via Zoom as well. So, moving on, for the criteria for conditional use permits, it's found in section 10.184, subsection 3 of the Metford Land Development Code. As a reminder, for CUPs, there's two options. Only one of them has to be met, and we found that the second criterion has been addressed, but we'll get there at the very end. So, quick summary, I think you all know, probably had to wait at that light for a while, where this location is, so just off of exit 27, the Highland Drive and Barnett intersection has some traffic concerns issues, which is why we are widening the bridge that is associated with this intersection, and that is why it is before you tonight. Quick background, so the project was listed in the Metford Transportation System Plan, and I think that was got adopted in 2018, was listed as Project I-78, and back then it was described as an intersection improvement, such as a second northbound right turn lane, which is in front of you today. So the, the traffic, especially in the mornings, backs up all the way from the intersection, Highland Drive, then onto the, the actual interchange, and then, in worst cases, all the way down to I-5 into the, the exit lane there. So with the addition of that second right turn lane, that should significantly improve the flow of this, for this intersection traffic flow. So, yeah, from here to here, and worst case, down to here. So this is a snippet of the actual proposal, so it is to install a second northbound right turn lane, and then the existing, I think that's a Larson Creek multi-use path will be relocated as well, it'll be adjacent to that, to that right turn lane, and best case, it'll be as quick as that to get through the intersection. So why is this in front of you today? It is because Larson Creek is a fish-bearing stream, so there is a riparian corridor associated with the creek. The widening of the bridge will slightly affect the riparian area. The bridge will be widened by about 13 feet. So that is the only reason this is before you tonight, it's because of the riparian area. Otherwise, the project would have just gone through, through ADOT, and there would have been no land use associated with this project. And that's exactly what I just pointed out. So code section 10.925 specifies when a CUP conditional use permit is required in regards to the riparian corridor. Then that section refers back to section 920, which has some specific criteria, and I've summarized this here on this screen. So the applicant will, ODOT will replace the landscaping in kind, it'll actually increase the amount of trees. I believe four are planned to be taken out and will be replaced with eight new trees. And then the additional impervious surface will be treated at an already existing pond for the interchange, and it'll just go through the system back into Larson Creek. We did add one condition of approval, and that is to work with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife to develop a habitat mitigation plan. I believe that is already under, in process. And then also a separate floodplain development permit is already in the works, and that'll be handled by staff. Like I said earlier, only one of the two criterion have to be addressed, and in this case, we found that the second one is applicable, so the development is in the public interest since it will significantly reduce the amount of congestion and traffic delays for that intersection, and the widening of the bridge is needed to relieve the traffic congestion that shows associated with it. Section 10.1A4 sub 3B has, gives the planning commission some options to include any specific conditions. Usually it has to do with fence side, lighting, stuff like that, so staff didn't identify any additional conditions that were needed. And it is therefore our recommended action to adopt the applicant's findings and adopt the final order tonight for the approval of CUP 25-325, and that's per the staff report dated December 4th of this year, including Exhibits A through H. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Stefan. And Commissioners have any questions of staff? All right, I'm not seeing any. Good work, huh?
Works for me.
Okay, with that, we will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to talk about the project.
Okay, everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, good evening, chairperson, members of the commission. I really appreciate you accommodating us through Zoom tonight. My name is Janelle Stradner, and I'm with Oregon Department of Transportation at 3500 Northwest dirt Parkway in Roseburg, 97470. And also with me is Justin Schumacher, who is the project manager on this project. So since Stefan went through the criteria, I thought I would just speak to the purpose of this project. He did a little bit, but it's to address the congestion on Highland Drive at that intersection with Barnett Road. Traffic using that right turn on Highland Drive backs up onto the exit 27, southbound off ramp. Oh, thanks, Stefan. And, and it travels, we don't have a picture of it, but it travels down the off ramp, so this causes safety concerns of rear-end crashes occurring on the off ramp when people are exiting off of I-5. And then, in addition, the spillback directly contributes to the congestion at the interchange because it blocks those turning left off that off ramp, because the off ramp is only one lane for a good portion. So it doesn't take much to back that traffic up. And to address the safety and congestion, we're proposing a second right turn lane from Highland to Barnett Road, which requires widening the bridge over Larson Creek. And so the additional, I just thought I'd add this in, the additional impervious surface that will be created from this project will be treated at the existing pond, but that will be rebuilt. And there's no wetlands, no impacts to floodplain or floodway. Erosion control measures will be in place, and tree planting will be at a two-to-one ratio. And so four trees, in addition to the surrounding shrubbery, will be removed, and then in that box is where the new eight native trees will be replanted. And our environmental coordinators have an ongoing working relationship with ODFW, and they'll adhere to any requirements. And with that, Justin and I are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Not seeing any questions down here. So we'll move on here, and is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this application? All right, I am not seeing anybody coming forward, so moving on here. Staff, Planning, have any additional comments? Engineering, have anything to add?
No.
Legal, any comments?
No.
All right, then we will close the public hearing, and do we have a motion for consideration?
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the applicant's findings.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the applicant's findings as recommended by staff and adopt the final order for approval of CUP-25-325 per the staff report dated December 4th, 2025, including exhibits A through H.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this agenda item? Seeing none, Kaylee, can we have a roll call, please?
Jared Pulver.
Yes.
Jeff Thomas.
Yes.
Larry Busco.
Yes.
David Colbertson.
Yes.
EJ McManus.
Yes.
Rachel Bennett.
Yes.
Mark McEckney.
Yes.
We have seven yeses.
Thank you, motion passes. Okay, good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
All right, agenda item 50.4, UP 25-302. A legislative amendment to revise the adopted urbanization plan for planning unit MD 2B in the neighborhood element of the comprehensive plan for 10 tax lots totaling approximately 225 acres, located south of East Vilas Road and east of Crater Lake Avenue and Crater Lake Highway. The purpose of the amendment is to relocate the collector street classification from Burlcrest Drive to Kingsley Drive at Crater Lake Highway. Relocate the wetlands' open space areas and relocate the commercial and service commercial GLUP map designations, which are based on street configurations and wetland mitigation areas. The applicant is Cokerbut Medford LD LLC. The agent is Clark Stevens, Richard Stevenson Associates. And the planner is Kelly Aiken. All right, Kelly, can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, commissioners, I am Kelly Aiken with your planning department. And I wanted to thank you first for allowing us to take things out of order. We moved a couple items around so that the zone change related to this application follows the application that it really needed to follow. So, thank you for that. Mr. Stevens, this is in the audience, as is our applicants this evening. So, this is the revision to the urbanization plan for planning area MD 2B. And as always, we start off with some legal stuff. This is a type 4 legislative amendment. Planning Commission, you're a recommending body and the city council has approving authority in this matter. Weird. The subject property, it's about 225 acres. It's located on the south side of Vilas Road and east of Crater Lake Avenue. And the request before you this evening is to revise the adopted urbanization plan. And there's three things that they're requesting. One is to relocate the minor collector street classification from Burlcrest Street to Kingsley, I'm sorry, Drive, to Kingsley Drive. Relocate and kind of adjust the location of the wetlands and some open space. And then, relocate the commercial and service commercial and, well, the residential GLUP designations as well. So, I'm going to give you just a little bit of background. I'm going to really just focus on those three specific requests. The approval criteria for urbanization plans are found in section 5 and 6 of the Urbanization Planning Chapter of the Neighborhood Element of the Comprehensive Plan. You gotta dig pretty far to find those. The urbanization plan has to be found to be substantially consistent with the items under plan content. There are 14 of them. They include RPS density requirements, neighborhood circulation plans, and open space allocations. The plan also has to meet one of the three items under GLUP amendments and those are that they're either minor, moderate, or complex spatial adjustments. The one before you this evening is actually a minor adjustment. Each of the criteria have been addressed thoroughly in your staff report and staff's found the, the plan content and the approval criteria are, have been found to be satisfied. So, this is the approved urbanization plan on the screen before you. The city council approved the urban growth boundary amendment process back in 2016, you may recall, adding about 1,600 acres into the urban growth boundary. That process was approved by the county in 2017 and acknowledged then by the state in 2018. And in 2022, the city council approved the urbanization plan for MD 2B, which is on the screen here. As I mentioned, it's about 225 acres, has a mix of commercial, service commercial, high-density residential, and single-family residential GLUP map designations. This planning unit is required to provide a minimum of 11% open space, which equates to just shy of 25 acres and produce a minimum of 548 dwelling units. And as part of the urbanization plan, higher-order streets, Crater Lake Avenue and Springbrook Road are identified as major collectors and currently Burlcrest Drive is a minor collector. So, that's urbanization plan in a nutshell. This may look familiar to you. Earlier this year, we saw the first development applications for MD 2B. It's at the very south end of the planning unit. It's called Skyview Estates. So, we've seen three phases of subdivision totaling about 112 or 13 single-family residential lots. And we also saw the related zone changes for those, for that development. Phase 3 was the last, the application that you saw. It's on near the southeast corner and it includes 11 acres of open space. So, the item following me this evening, Kagan will be talking about a zone change that's going to happen at the very north end of the planning unit. So, I mentioned the change to the, the minor street classification. So, on the left of the screen is the current alignment or designated minor collector of Burlcrest Road. We're going to move that to the north up to Kingsley, which on this map is, here's the alignment across. So, we're moving it north. I don't know how many, a couple hundred feet. And it does a couple different things. One, it straightens out as it moves to the east, so we don't have as many curves to maneuver through. And it also kind of skates, sneaks through the wetlands a little more readily than Burlcrest did. The, there is a school site. It's identified on this map and it's not, you can see the parcel, but it's not called out on, on the updated map. But you can see that the alignment still will reach the, the school site. So, besides avoiding the wetlands, there's a little bit of topography out there. So, this is, many thanks to Google Street View for sharing this. So, this is Burlcrest looking east at Highway 62. You can see the guardrail above that is Crater Lake Avenue. And then, you can see behind the guardrail, there's even more topography. So, that was part of the, part of the reasoning behind the request is that would be a whole lot of grading and some really interesting engineering to make that intersection work. So, staff does not object to that request. The, as part of the urban growth boundary expansion process, the city had to conduct a local wetland inventory. That map is shown on the left of your screen. And that was done and approved in 2018. Our inventory did identify some wetlands in MD 2B. So, the applicant conducted a, an analysis of wetland delineation, had that approved by the Department of State Lands back in 2020. Department of State Lands, those delineations have a shelf life, so they only are good for five years. And this one expired back in August of 2025. So, the applicant's been working on updating that and I understand that it's in DSL's review queue now. If it is or if it isn't, I don't, I'm not going to say it doesn't matter because it does matter, but it has to be resolved before we're able to go vertical in those areas. So, more to come on that part. So, there's a little bit of an open space adjustment. These adjustments, and same with the wetlands, are really driven by some final engineering and more, more accurate and more refined design efforts. So, as an example, on the screen is the final, or the tentative plat for phase 3 that I spoke about. You can see the whole southeast of the corner of that subdivision is open space. It's, you'll recall, it's the knoll that we just saw. So, so the adjustments to the open space, that's what it's about, is really final engineering and final survey work. So, as I mentioned earlier, the original urbanization plan for MD 2B calls for 11% open space. The adjusted plan shows about 12%. So, as we continue to see development applications move through these processes, we'll continue to keep an eye on the, on those requirements. Let's see, finally, so there are four general land use plan map designations in this planning unit. There's commercial, service commercial, urban high-density residential, and urban residential, which allows the single-family zones. So, the applicant's, has proposed to reconfigure the boundaries. So, on the left of the screen is the existing, that's the approved urbanization plan. And on the right is what's proposed. So, the dark pink areas are the service commercial and the lighter pink areas are commercials. So, you can see that they relocated, this is the school site. So, instead of split GLUP-ing it, it's all has the same GLUP designation and just kind of shifted around all four of the GLUP designations on the property. As I mentioned earlier, it's, it's a minor adjustment. It moves about five acres from the commercial GLUP designations to the urban residential GLUP designation that equates to about 2%. If my math is right. And let's see, finally, the urbanization plan rules allow the applicant to make commitments demonstrating, in a way to demonstrate how they're going to meet their density and open space requirements. So, the applicant has committed to using 18.7 acres of your land at SFR 6 densities and provide townhouses. All eight acres of the urban high-density residential land will be zoned MFR 20, which allows 15 to 20 units to the acre. And they're committing to use 11.7 acres of commercial land and develop those to MFR 30 standards. And you'll recall, MFR 30 allows, in the commercial zones, allows, requires a minimum of 20 units to the acre and there's no maximum in the commercial zones. So, the, using these commitments, the project will result in a minimum of 620 dwelling units in those residential lands and that does exceed the, the requirement. So, with that, staff is recommending that you forward a favorable recommendation on this application. And with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff on this application?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I think the, the maps and the lineout of the street developments and what phases they attach to were very, very helpful. But at one point in time, or at what point in time, will Crater Lake Avenue actually be connected to Vilas? Because there's no section in here that IDs that.
That's a good question. So, I'm going to defer. That is actually related to the zone change and not this application. You're right, that was great. We had not, I had not seen that.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to have, we'll have to defer that.
Yeah, this is fantastic.
Yeah, it was really, it was very helpful. But it is not related to this particular bit of the planning process.
Perfect.
Okay, any other questions? I'm not, not seeing any.
All right, I like it, thank you.
Okay, well, we will open the public hearing. And do we have anyone, well, let's ask the applicant to come in and forward and talk about the project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. For the record, my name's Clark Stevens with Richard Stevens and Associates. We're here tonight for the applicants and property owners who are with us this evening in the audience. This application is an amendment to an approved urbanization plan, MD 2B, as in boy. And staff has presented a very complete and thorough report for you and presentation and identified the key points as far as why we're making this amendment. Relocating Burlcrest up to Kingsley Drive. It just, the geometry and how the street connectivity works is much more efficient. Once we got into the surveying and topo of why the open space in the southeast corner, the wetlands, those things were further defined, so we were able to move some of the streets around. That's why we're seeing some minor adjustments with that. And then, finally, we just had to flip-flop some of the commercial areas just to make it sense. It was like we couldn't figure out why we had two different comp plans, two zones for a school site. So, we just tried to make things a little more consistent with the future change of zoning on those separate properties. So, with that, I, we'll probably get into some more of the detailed questions as far as, I think you saw probably a new street improvement plan. I believe that's what you were referring to, Mr. Colbertson. So, we can discuss that, you know, how that looks. But that gives you basically the general idea of how this will progress going through the project. And I believe the commission, even during phase 3 of the project, were kind of questioning, how are we going to move from 3 to 4? So, this, I hope, this exhibit, I hope, answers a lot of those questions or we can answer those questions for you at that time. So, with that, I'll conclude and be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
Yep. You have one, yes. I'll just ask the same question. I know that, that Kim Parducci's mapping and everything is fantastic. But again, one of the biggest concerns is as this progress goes towards Vilas Road, it looks like the connectivity is going to come up Crater Lake Ave, or Crater Lake, yeah, Crater Lake, keep it straight. Crater Lake Avenue is going to then take a little bit of a dogleg, go into the subdivision and then go past Kingsley to then stop, turn left, go back over to the old Crater Lake Avenue to access those buildings. Because at some point in time, Crater Lake Avenue is going to get axed at both ends. When is the section of Crater Lake Avenue going to go all the way from Kingsley to Vilas?
The new Crater Lake Avenue?
Yes.
That'll be dependent upon the commercial development north of Kingsley.
Okay.
So, phase 4, and we'll talk about this again, phase 4 traffic study then actually is reducing a lot of that impacts at Crater, the existing Crater Lake Avenue and Vilas. So, it's not being warranted for any improvements at that time. Springbrook to Kingsley is actually redirecting and reducing trips at that Crater Lake Avenue and Vilas as it exists. So, that's, again, we're probably covering both reports, but that's the rationale with that. So, it's the trigger for Crater Lake Avenue north of, let's even say, the dogleg will be dependent on our commercial development at that point.
Well, I know it'll definitely reduce the speed on Crater Lake Avenue.
Yes, it'll slow them down.
Yes, it will. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Just, I have one. And we had a nice little graphic on Burlcrest on the east and west sides of Crater Lake Highway. What, what's the elevation difference going to be at Kingsley?
Oh, that's probably about three feet or four feet difference.
Vertically?
Yes.
As opposed to the 10 or 12 that we have?
Yeah, Ms. Parducci and I walked out there a couple times and we were like, this is crazy. Because we're, if we punch Burlcrest through and say we got it to a grade so that you're at an intersection, then we're putting probably a 15, 20-foot retaining wall against the house and everything on the uphill side. So, it was just not going to make a whole lot of sense. And it's like, why not move it over to this location? Actually lines up much better, as you can see, you know, it's a much better plan at this point.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'll reserve time for rebuttal.
Okay. All right, with that, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. So, does planning have any additional comments?
No, thank you, Chair.
Engineering, have anything to add?
No.
Legal, any comments?
Nothing.
Okay, I'm assuming, Mr. Stevens, you don't need time for rebuttal. So, we will close the public hearing. And do we have a motion for consideration?
We do. I just have one question of Kelly. Are these new submittals going to be incorporated into our exhibits?
That's not for this application, that's for the zone change that follows.
Oh, we, okay. Mr. Chair, since being corrected, I move to, based on the findings and conclusions that all applicable criteria are satisfied or not applicable, forward a favorable recommendation for the approval of UP-25-302 to the city council per the staff report dated December 4th, 2025.
4th, 2025, including Exhibits A through G.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this agenda item? All right, seeing none, Kaylee, can we have a roll call, please?
Jeff Thomas?
Yes.
EJ McManus?
Yes.
David Culbertson?
Yes.
Larry Busco?
Yes.
Rachel Bennett?
Yes.
Jared Pulver?
Yes.
Mark McHekney?
Yes.
We have seven yeses?
Thank you, motion passes. All right, moving on to item 50 point, it's not really 50.3, is it?
50.5.
50.5, thank you. ZC 25-335, application requesting the removal of the EA overlay and requesting a zone change from SFR 00 to FSR, SFR six across 18.98 gross acres and SFR 10 across 7.89 gross acres. Look, the property is located south of East Vilas Road and east of Crater Lake Highway, and together comprise approximately 26.6 acres of the special planning unit MD two B. The applicant is Skycrest Engineering Services, Inc. The agent is Richard Stevens and Associates, and the planner is Keegan Benson. Does any commissioner have a conflict of interest or ex parte contact to disclose regarding this application? Okay, seeing none, does anyone in attendance wish to question the commission as to conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts? All right, not seeing anything there. Keegan, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good evening, I'm Keegan Benson with your planning department. I'm presenting on applicant requested zone change with removal of EA overlay for the Skyview Estates parcels located in the Cokerbutte area. Hopefully this looks familiar. It was just discussed in UP 25302, presented a moment ago by Ms. Aiken. We will start with your authority and the zone change approval criteria. This is a type three quasi-judicial decision. The planning commission is the approving authority per Medford Land Development Code 10.110 subsection four. The criteria are found in MLDC 10.204, and these are shown on the screen and are in the staff report as well. The criteria have been addressed in the staff report and have been found to be satisfied. We have the additional criteria for removal of the EA overlay. This is found at 10.360 subsection three. This is also shown on the screen in the staff report and has been found to be satisfied. Onto the project itself. We will start out with project location at a 500-foot view. We see special planning unit MD two B outlined in blue dashes. Our subject sites are tax lot 300 and 315 outlined in light blue. You'll see that we are south of East Vilas Road, east of Crater Lake Avenue, and if it helps to orient yourselves, you can see the Rogue Valley Expressway over here to the west. Project summary. The applicants are requesting removal of the EA overlay across the entirety of both tax lots. You see that overlay in the image on the screen. And they propose a minor zone change for portions of both tax lots, rezoning from SFR 00 to SFR six. This is illustrated by the blue polygon. And across a total of 19.55 net acres. And from SFR 00 to SFR 10, this is shown by the yellow polygon there. It's across 7.32 net acres. Ninety, roughly 97, 98 percent of this will be within that tax lot, 300. So two tax lots, which we've gone over. Total 112 net acres. They are glupped as, I'm going to show the amended glup designation that would be in place if UP 25302 is passed. The areas in yellow are designated UR or urban residential, and this is where the zone change is being requested. Right now, the current zoning is SFR 00. And then just to, oh, let me go back real quick. Just to recap, applicants are requesting two actions, a zone change across portions of the two tax lots, and removal of the EA overlay. Surrounding site, the site is adjacent to city limits and immediately surrounded by a wide range of uses. Here we see just city limits with our two tax lots. Here we can see the county zoning. There is rural residential, general commercial, and exclusive farm use. Here we can see the city zoning. Heavy commercial, light industrial, general industrial, and heavy industrial to the west and north and south. And then SFR 00 and SFR six in the lower half of special planning unit MD two B. And then about a quarter mile south, you can see there, there's some mixed residential, both multifamily and single-family. Next are our findings of fact, which address the project's compliance with required criteria for the minor zone change and for removal of the EA overlay. Since this application relies on the passage of that urbanization amendment, it's a little difficult to show you. Medford Land information doesn't show this glup designation arrangement yet. So I've tried my best here. So we see the two tax lots. Now we see the glup designation as it will be if that amendment is passed. The areas within tax lots 300 and 315 designated as UR are shown in yellow, and those are where the requested zone change would take place. We can see the area to be rezoned as SFR six outlined in blue and SFR 10 outlined in orange. And this figure illustrates the specific areas to be rezoned are within the urban residential designation. Since the corresponding zoning districts include both SFR six and SFR 10, this figure demonstrates that the requested zoning is consistent with the glup designation to be established with UP 25302. And conditional upon that amendment's approval by City Council, the commission can find that this portion of Criteria One is met. Next is the transportation system plan consistency. So transportation system plan serves as a blueprint to guide transportation decisions. When a proposed development has the potential to create more than 250 net average daily trips, then a transportation impact analysis is done. A TIA was done for this project, submitted October 1st, and evaluated over 1,800 potential new trips. This showed potential for some increased collisions. To address this, public staff, public work staff worked with the applicant's transportation engineer to develop appropriate mitigation. In response, the applicant just recently committed, completed and submitted the information found in Exhibit M1, which is now up on the screen. Figure two B in the center of the screen illustrates the proposed street improvements. These improvements are discussed in greater detail in the applicant's submittal in Exhibit M-1 and in the public work staff report in Exhibit G, which states, "To mitigate collisions, the developer is proposing constructing Crater Lake Avenue," seen here in green, "along a new alignment to the prolongation of Kingsley Drive," seen in blue. "Constructing Kingsley Drive eastward from Crater Lake Highway to Spring Brook Road, and then constructing, constructing Spring Brook Road from its intersection with Kingsley Drive north to East Vilas Road." The staff report states that these new connections adequately mitigate the increased collision potential at Crater Lake Avenue and East Vilas Road by rerouting trips onto these additional street connections, concluding that the proposed zone change from SFR 00 to SFR six and 10 can be approved dependent upon achievement of the conditions detailed in the public work staff report and referred to in Exhibit A, item number two. This demonstrates the proposed project's consistency with TSP element of criterion one. Accordingly, the commission can find this criterion is met upon satisfaction of the conditions of approval listed in Exhibit A. Criteria two, the locational criteria. There are no locational criteria for SFR six, for SFR 10. Lost my spell here. The additional locational criteria requires that for zone changes, SFR 10, one of the following conditions must exist. We'll go subsection B, the area to be rezoned is three acres or larger. As this figure shows, the area to be rezoned as SFR 10 is almost eight acres. As the commissioners will know, eight is larger than three, providing a clear illustration that a zone change to SFR 10 would comply with the locational standard criteria. Criteria three is the facility adequacy. Criteria three, it shall be demonstrated that category A urban services and facilities are available or can and will be available at the time of vertical construction. Category A services include water, sewer, street, and storm drain facilities. This application was analyzed by both city staff from various departments and outside agencies, and based on evidence in the record, Exhibits G through K, it has been demonstrated that the subject property complies with this criterion. Accordingly, the commission can find this criterion is met. For the EA overlay removal, for removal of the EA overlay, type three zone change procedures are used, which we are doing, and it requires that the property owner must certify that all agriculture and agriculture-related uses, not otherwise permitted by the underlying, underlying zoning district, have been terminated by the date of the application and shall not be considered legal nonconformities. To address this, included in the applicant's findings is a statement shown on the screen affirming that agricultural uses have ceased and that any farm or ag uses will not be considered legal nonconformities. Accordingly, the commission can find this criterion is satisfied. Recommendation, based on the evidence in the record, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the findings in a final order of approval for ZC 25335 per the commission report dated December 11th, 2025, including Exhibits A through L and including Exhibit M-1. Thank you. That is all that I have. If you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Thank you. Do we have questions of staff? You got one? Good.
So, real quick, might be the applicant that needs to answer this. Crater Lake Highway is an ODOT facility?
I will defer to the applicant, Commissioner.
Got it.
No, it's now a city facility.
What is, Crater Lake Highway? What is the, what is the function when Kingsley hits Crater Lake Avenue? Full mobility, in and out, left, right, right only, right in, right out? Is there a light?
I don't know.
Because that's going to be a busy spot.
Right. No, but that is, that is a city facility. I don't know if they've got that far yet. It should have been part of the traffic before.
Tug, you didn't get away. Perhaps the applicant can answer that. Outstanding. Punt.
And any other? Nuts. So I have just one general caution. We've been given this great graphic from Southern Oregon Transportation. And exactly which parcels are we talking about for, for this? For the application that's before us? Like, I figured out it's number four, but is it number, only number four? All three of the fours?
If I understand your question, we're, for the zone change, we're looking at tax lots 300 and 315.
Yeah, but which phase is it of this?
Of Phase Four.
Oh, it's all Phase Four?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, all right. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, moving on here. Can we have the applicant come forward and talk about the application?
Thank you, Mr.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I've got to open the public hearing. Now you can talk.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, for the record, my name's Clark Stevens with Richard Stevens and Associates, representing the applicant and property owners in this change of zoning to SFR six and SFR 10 for Phase Four of this project, Skyview Estates. And staff has presented a very thorough and complete presentation for you in regards to meeting the public facilities, water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater with this project. Street locations and improvements are going to be critical and important, and the timing of it is also very important with this application. Quickly, why we're jumping Phase Four to Vilas Road is that the sanitary sewer improvements are located in Vilas Road, and also the water is located in that location. And if you recall, where does this mouse? We have this, which mouse is? Oh, there we are. We have this canal, which is a separation of the drainage basins. So everything that's developed in this location will flow towards Vilas Road. Everything south of the canal flows towards Cokerbutte Road. So, and if you recall, Phase Three came into this location approximately here. So if we were to do any further development, we'd be crossing the canal. Where'd the mouse go? Okay, and then we'd be, you know, going back this way through open land. So that's the purpose of why we're proposing Phase Four, starting on Vilas, coming back south to Kingsley, and then eventually, we actually showed Phase Five, so how Spring Brook will actually tie in and make a full connection with Phase Three, Phase Four, all the way to Vilas Road. So you can see, when this project's fully developed, how the connectivity will work. So this is a engineering dream or nightmare, however you want to look at it, but this is why we're moving these phases around. With that, I, let's go ahead and jump into, I think the question is, can we pull up the, do we have the M1 exhibit? So we'll go into that. I think there was a question about signalization or Kingsley at the highway. That is, let's say, the complicated, a three-step process right there. So Crater Lake Highway is, is an arterial street. That is planned to be a full four-leg movement at that location. So currently, Phase Three, as you approved it a few months ago, was to have a 22-foot section of Crater Lake Avenue and then turn west on Kingsley to tie into Crater Lake Highway. That's also the timing, we're going to disconnect the existing Crater Lake Avenue, so we don't create what's occurring currently on Vilas Road. With the full development of Phase Four, then Kingsley will be improved to full minor collector street standards. It still doesn't warrant a signal yet with Phase Four. We haven't done Phase Five, but we're anticipating also no signal with Phase Five. When we start developing the commercial, more than likely, a new signal will be at that intersection. So there will be, and it's planned to be signaledized, Burlcrest was planned to be signaledized. So it's just a matter of the traffic study and public works when that timing will occur. But that'll be a four, four-leg intersection with turn lanes. Any other questions I can try to answer?
Question? So just, so I understand it, when Phase Four is fully built out with SFR six and SFR 10, the access for those residential units will be up and down Spring Brook, north to Vilas, and south on down into the rest of the city. Is that correct? And there wouldn't be the access, or Kingsley would not be improved over to Crater Lake Highway until such time as some of the commercial development occurs? Is that correct?
No, Kingsley will be, that's what's critical about the full development of Phase Four, is Kingsley from Spring Brook Road to Crater Lake Highway will be fully improved on both sides.
I see, okay.
Yeah, and this is part of the rationale of how we're actually reducing trips at the existing Crater Lake Avenue intersection in Vilas. It's, this new east-west connection actually provides an alternative route to Vilas Road.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a question? Oh, yes.
Thank you. My question is actually a kind of follow-up to both Dave's and Mark's, is that Dave was asking, you know, what's going to happen when Kingsley gets to Crater Lake Highway? And I'm guessing all that's going to be And I'm guessing all that's going to be brought out to any open when phase four comes in for approval then, right?
Actually, it's triggered phase three as a twenty-two-foot-wide structural section.
Right. But what's, I mean, but Dave was asking, are there going to be, is there going to be a median in Crater Lake Highway? Or are you going to allow left turns off of?
Yes, we're planning on left turn movements. It's currently a five-lane structure, north and south on Crater Lake Highway, so yes, we are planning on full movements, left, in and out there at that intersection.
And, but it doesn't meet warrants for a signal there?
Not yet.
Okay.
But it will one day.
Okay. And if I could ask one more question, please. So in light of the fact that Crater Lake Avenue won't get extended to Vilas until the commercial starts, that's, my question is, is the commercial starting? Are you, are you going to get through all the phases of the urban residential before you start on the commercial?
Right. The Crater Lake Avenue north of, I'll call it the dog leg, will, will be developed when commercial property is developed in that area, so, right.
That's still pretty much a mystery.
We, we have no timing, no idea when that connection will be made.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I'm not seeing any, so I assume you're going to want to reserve time for rebuttal?
Yeah, just in case.
Just in case.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak regarding this application? Not too many people left to speak. Okay. Seeing none, does planning have any additional comments?
No, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Engineering have anything?
Nothing.
Legal have anything to add?
Nothing.
Okay, with that, then, we will close the public hearing. And we have a motion for consideration.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the findings as recommended by staff and adopt the final order for approval of ZC dash twenty-five dash three thirty-five, per the staff report dated December fourth, twenty twenty-five, including exhibits A through M one.
Thank you.
The screen says December twelfth.
What? We're done?
Is my script correct or is the screen correct?
So we'll produce a commission report to include, incorporate the, the new exhibit?
The date of the report?
Dated, dated today, dated the eleventh.
Okay. So the report dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
That's fine, thank you.
Make that correction.
Okay. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Kaylee, can we have a roll call, please?
Rachel Bennett?
Yes.
Jeff Thomas?
Yes.
Jared Pulver?
Yes.
E.J. McManus?
Yes.
David Colbertson?
Yes.
Larry Besko?
Yes.
Mark McKechney?
Yes.
We have seven yeses.
Thank you, motion passes. Good luck with your project. And that concludes tonight's public hearings. Moving on to item sixty, presentat, excuse me, presentation of reports, Transportation Commission, Mr. Pulver.
Yeah, we met, I guess it was last week, we had a weird day on the third. But we didn't talk a lot about, much about, we were just about committee appointments and things of that nature, but I guess if you hadn't heard, I'm trying to think what all we've heard, but Carl McNair presented kind of the, the findings on the Main Street survey. So I guess I, if we hadn't heard it, I thought I'd bring it up, but it seemed like the, I'm paraphrasing a little bit, but I think the most popular option was to take it back to normal, or not to what it was, excuse me, take it back to what it was, which I thought was kind of interesting. I think the second highest vote getter was to leave it as is. And then the third option was the buffered bike lane. So what I believe I was told was that council had kind of directed staff to take the two-way scenario, which was the fourth scenario, kind of blowing up Maine and having two-way traffic and some other things, off the table. And so they were, they had a study session, probably has happened now, it might have been last week or this week, but to talk about the three remaining options. So anyway, that's, that's still going on, but I know that's a topic of interest, so.
All right, thank you. Site Plan and Architectural Commission, Mr. Thomas.
We have not met since our last meeting.
All right, Planning Department, Ms. Aiken.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening again, commissioners. Let's see, reminder, your boards and commission luncheon, January twenty-second, out of the Rogue X. Let's see, study sessions coming up. So you are aware, we have a study session scheduled for December twenty-second for Stevens Street. So I think that there's been some good work done on that, and we wanted to have the opportunity to have some more in-depth conversation about kind of some of what the, what the options are and then get some direction. January twelfth, I don't have any business scheduled for January twelfth, for the study session. For your regular meetings, of course, we're not going to be meeting on Christmas, you're welcome. We do have business for January the eighth. We have, I don't know, three or four items scheduled for the eighth. I'm not sure if we're going to have business scheduled for January twenty-second, we're still scheduling. If we don't, what I'd like to do is go ahead and use that meeting time for our Planning one oh one study session. I think Commissioner Bennett had requested an evening session for that. I think it would be best done in person, I think it would be pretty interesting. So keep an eye out for that one. And then City Council, we haven't met since they approved the SPAC membership code amendment, so that work was done, they reduced the number of members on SPAC from nine to seven. They reduced by two at-large positions. One of those is already vacant. And let's see, at December third, at their meeting last week, they approved the driveway access code amendment and the proportionate chair code amendment. So those are two good tools for our public works folks. Coming up in January, we don't have any business on their study session agenda, and as a reminder, a constant reminder, we have that joint study session with City Council scheduled for March. So what I'd like to do is maybe spend a little bit of time, probably in January, coming up with some thoughts, some thoughts and ideas from you as far as what kind of topics you'd like to discuss with council. I think that would be meaningful if it could come from you instead of staff putting an agenda together. So anyways, we'll talk about that more in January. That's all that I had. I wanted to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We won't see you till January, well, we'll see you next week. But, but only virtually. But if you try. Not Mark, that's right. If you travel, travel well, travel safely, wear your mask because who knows what's going to be in the plane with you. And enjoy your holidays.
All right, thank you. All right, messages and papers from the chair? Well, just like to echo what Ms. Aiken said, that this is our last meeting for twenty, well, last public meeting here for twenty twenty-five, and wish you all a happy holidays and safe New Years and things, safe travels. Remarks from the city attorney?
No remarks.
You're welcome. Propositions and remarks from commission members? Nothing? All right, well, we are adjourned.